So, turn on the microphones, please. So, we're open to tonight's meeting. It's Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. And at 7:00 here in Truth and Taxation Hearing, an annual opportunity for public to give testimony regarding our final levy. So, does anybody in the audience here wish to speak on the levy or on the taxation issues at this point? Each year, the local government is required to hold a public meeting after the notices come out where budget and tax issues are discussed, where public testimony may or must be allowed prior to adopting its final levy. We'll be adopting our final levy at the meeting later tonight. So, if anyone has anything to say, speak now or forever hold your peace. And I'm seeing no one and I'm hearing no one, so we will close the Truth and Taxation Hearing. Now, we'll have to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is printed or amended will be followed to all necessary and needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. This is from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the mayor, second, given the address of the record, and third, you will have no more than three minutes to state your common concern. There are copies of the agenda available at the back of the room. There is a sign up sheet, and we ask that you please turn your cell phones off. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll ask Lieutenant to give the sheriff's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, citizens of Nowland, members of the city council and city staff. Just a very brief report from the sheriff's office regarding calls for service for the month of November 2017. During the month, sheriff's deputies responded to 134 calls for service. Some of the noteworthy calls for the month, on the 3rd of the month, a white Chevrolet Express van was stolen from the 5300 block of 199th Avenue Northwest. The van was taken out for a test drive and never returned. Looking at the reports and the investigation, it looks like a suspect utilized a, what is appearing to be a fraudulent identification, to obtain the vehicle for a test drive and then took it out and never came back with it. So, the vehicle was entered as stolen, and the investigation is ongoing into that. And then, on the same day, at about 7:15 PM, one of our squad cars was parked with its emergency lights on at the scene of a property damage crash in the 18500 block of St. Francis Boulevard. At that time, a vehicle driving by struck our squad car and continued on its path on St. Francis Boulevard. We happened to have another deputy in the area who tracked down the vehicle that had hit our squad car and stopped the vehicle. The driver was intoxicated and ultimately was arrested for DUI by the State Patrol. Since the crash involved one of our squad cars, we asked another agency to come in and write the crash and handle the incident. But it was interesting, at, you know, 7:15 PM, we had an intoxicated driver who was so intoxicated that they hit a fully marked squad car with all of its emergency lights on, and actually, there were multiple squad cars there. Still couldn't manage to stay away from hitting that vehicle. So, luckily, no one was hurt, and there wasn't anybody inside of the squad car at the time. The deputies were out tending to the crash alongside the road, so we're saying.
Did the driver know they hit the squad car?
Pardon me?
Did the driver know they hit the squad car?
I believe so. I don't think it would have been a, shouldn't have been a surprise to anybody that they hit something. So, but I didn't see the actual interview, so I don't know for sure, but I would certainly assume so. And then, on the 15th, this is something I wanted to point out to the council. You know, we always talk about how much the, we appreciate citizen interaction and how much the public actually helps us do our job. On the 15th of this month, deputies and medical personnel responded to a report of a woman not breathing in the 19600 block of Nowland Boulevard. Upon the deputy's arrival, a bystander had administered CPR and used an AED on the victim. And by the time the deputy got there, the victim was actually able to talk and converse with the deputy and was speaking with medical personnel and then was transported to the hospital. But it's one of those cases where I fully believe that if that person hadn't been there and done what they did, that victim would have likely not survived that incident. So, again, we thank the public for all the times they intercede to help us do our job, and for me, that's a prime example. And we certainly thank that person for all their help. And then, just lastly, just a reminder from, from the sheriff's office, it's the holiday season, so be very careful with your online purchasing, making sure you're guarding your credit and all of those things if you're doing stuff online. Even when you're out and about at stores, this is a really tough time of year for, a bad time here for fraud and theft type of things. So, be mindful of those things. And again, if you have deliveries coming to your home for things you order online, make sure and take the best care you can to get those packages and stuff secured right away, because undoubtedly, some will try to take advantage of the good, hard-working people in this, in this town during the holiday season. So, just a, just a reminder for everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything from the council? I see our nice report here, very thorough. Does this replace the other summary sheet we were getting? Do you know?
Which one are you referring to there?
I'm referring to the full color.
That doesn't replace the whole. That's just all of the calls for service. And just so the council gets a snapshot of all the calls versus just the, kind of the summary that we were doing. Did you not get the summary this month?
I didn't see.
Okay. I apologize that you should have gotten that one.
If I had to miss one, I would miss that over this. This is, this is a good report, so. All right. We're not complaining since we got this, but.
No, but I, it's good for me to know. And please, Corey, your council, don't hesitate to let me know if you haven't gotten that, because I assume I'm not the one that sends that to the city generally. So, if I don't hear anything, I assume that you've received it. So, please don't ever hesitate to let me know, and I'll try to get you what you need. My apologies for that.
Not a problem. Anything else from council? Thank you, Lieutenant. Our best wishes in the holiday season to the sheriff's department.
Thank you.
Pass that along.
I will.
And thank the patrol division on our behalf. They appreciate our partnership. Floor items, we have one item here from Mr. Gary Udi. And the lot split being tabled. Speak to the microphone, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for, for the time. Yes, I. You're in my mind. I'm asking that Item C on your planning and zoning be tabled until the February meeting, and at that time, that would give ample time for your city engineer to respond to the new survey that we have, will have supplied him.
You requesting a February council meeting?
Yes.
Corey, do you know on the 60-day, has got that covered?
Well, I believe that he's making the request himself. That should cover it instead of us being the ones making the extension, but I'll clarify that.
Okay. We'll take that in note when we address that item, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the planning and zoning. First up, the Nowland Historical Power Association.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that according to the facts, findings and decision provided by the city planner and including the information on the December 12th, 12:40, 12:34 PM email, that the council approves the request for approval to amend both the current conditional use and interim use permits for 7415 Old Viking Boulevard and the following parcels, 21-33-25-42-001,
Could you give me those numbers again?
I can.
Second.
We have motion in the second. Per the note we got from the planner, so that includes the corrections or amendments as she presented?
Yes.
Andy, are you familiar with those?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. We have motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The next item, B on planning and zoning, I move that according to the facts and findings and recommendations provided by city planner, the city council approves the request for an interim use permit to allow an extended home occupation to operate at 39300 195th Avenue Northwest, the PID of 30-33-25-24-007.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion? Seeing, Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things I have is, in listening to the planning and zoning audio, one of the things that they brought forward, that committee members brought forward was a number of trees to be planted, and I know that the applicant was okay with doing that. I just think that the number is kind of an overreach, and my concern is that in this rush to make sure that everything is blocked, we are now taking that residence view from their property away because of all of these trees. So, I don't know if the council is interested in looking at reducing the numbers of the trees. I think there were 18 trees. A second item that I have is number seven under the revised, under the recommendation, it states, "Any further accessory building additions require building permit. A total of three accessory structures are permitted which do not exceed a total of 6,400 square feet with a maximum height of 30 feet." I am just wondering the need to have that included. That's a building code issue that's not associated with this existing application. I don't know if that's, if that's necessary. And then, under number 10, it says, "The property should be periodically reviewed for compliance upon notification by the zoning administrator or building official according to a review frequency as may be established by the council." I would like to just change the verbiage to read, "The property shall be reviewed upon complaint by the zoning administrator or building official." I understand planner Stockman's, the periodic review, but the problem is, is we don't do those anyway, because our staff is not, doesn't have the time to do those, and we typically have been complaint-driven. So, if there is no complaints on the property, is there any need to continue to review it?
I'll address the 18 trees. You know, the property owner was not, actually said he was looking at landscaping, regrading the entire property landscaping. I think that if he was concerned about boxing himself in, he wouldn't have been as amenable to that. So, if he was agreeable and it helped the neighbors, I, since he's agreeable, I'd like to stick with the 18 trees. Item seven, the accessory structures and the square footage and the height, even though it is in the ordinance, I don't think it hurts to remind people here, because it's one of those things, people come back later and say, gee, I didn't know that. And, and if they come back and feign innocence, she's put it in the IUP as saying, your IUP is contingent on that. We could go back and say, if you violated the ordinance, it could jeopardize the IUP. This is a lot clearer saying, if you're overbuilding, you immediately jeopardize your IUP. You don't have to go back through the ordinance and tie it together.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
The only thing with that, though, is if the ordinance changed, then is it this or is it the new ordinance? There's going to be some confusion there. I'd like, rather see it removed than whatever it's, it's just they got to buy by the current ordinance.
Yeah, but if they've already got it, they've got the IUP, and they've already got that, are you going to downscale them if the ordinance changes to less than 6,400 square feet or fewer than three buildings? So, I think from the IUP standpoint, they'd want to know that I'm grandfathered in here in my IUP. If they change the ordinance to, to have a lesser allowable square footage, they don't have to downscale their operation. I think, I think it gives them the protection if we do change something in the future. Again, not that that's pending at this point, but, but I think it does if somebody's getting an IUP, gives them the protection by having it in here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I don't read that as, this is a guarantee. I, again, I'd like to see it removed, and Councilmember Bettinger is correct. If we change our ordinances down the road and they haven't done anything yet, they're going to be obligated to go with the current ordinance as far as square footer height or the number of accessory buildings. I see more problems if we allow them, let's say we, let's say down the road, we go down to 5,000 square feet and 25.
As a hypothetical.
Correct. But we've already allowed this person to build something larger, taller than anything somebody else is going to be able to do in that same time period. I would like to see it removed.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Wouldn't, if we did, even if, let's just say hypothetically, we did change ordinance, we'd already have buildings that would have been built under the previous ordinance.
Yes, I think Councilmember Rainville's point is, if he hadn't built yet.
He'd have to comply with the new ordinance.
Yeah, and that's a good point. If he'd already built, he'd be grandfathered in anyway.
But if, if we leave this in and he hasn't built, then he would be able to build at the larger size.
And if it's not in there, and it does, yeah, I'm not sure what happens if, if the buildings disappear. He couldn't rebuild to those.
Previous standards.
He'd have to go to the current standards.
Correct.
So, that makes sense.
I guess the question, the question for me is, what's the precedent? I mean, in, in other IUPs and CUPs, I would kind of expect that it would just fall back to.
I don't know that I've seen this in any IUPs before. It typically says compliance with all city ordinances.
So, then, I would say, let's just go with that.
All right. And then, back on the number 10, rather than periodic review for compliance, put the verbiage in there regarding complaint. We would respond upon complaints for violations of the IUP. Council's okay with that? All right?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to amend Councilmember Rainville's original motion to include these two revisions.
Yes, so Councilmember Rainville, you want to amend your motion to include those?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I would.
Okay, so, we're removing Item 7, renumbering and amending Item 10 to be complaint-driven and leaving Number 8 as is. Got the understood motion? And who's the second on that?
Ray.
All right, so, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the amended motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to table the request from Mr. Udi until the February council meeting.
Could you put in there per Mr. Udi's?
Per Mr. Udi's request.
Udi?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to appoint Mr. Jason Alders to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm just wondering, I, and I've been out of commission for a month, but I don't remember getting his application. Did we?
It's on the backside. They're both on one sheet of paper.
Was it? Oh, okay. I missed that.
We had that question the other day, too. It's on the backside.
All right, thank you. I'll go back, I'm going to put that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on Item P, I have a note from the planner. Recommend name for the new letter to be sent to property owners and send the motion to, council should make a motion to send Section 153 to Planning and Zoning for Review and Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
I, no, go ahead.
Are you making that as a motion and a?
No, I'm just reading the notes here. I don't know if we need to name it before it goes. I think certainly there can be discussion at PNZ, and Items 1, 2, and 3 certainly can be discussed more in detail there than tonight, since we just got this this afternoon. So, I would, I would motion to send the associated documents from the planner for the, the letter that goes out to the property owners before the administrative notice, along with planner's notes 1, 2, and 3 in her email dated 12th of November or December. Go back to the Planning and Zoning for discussion and review and recommendation back to the council.
No second?
Motion in the second. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Content update, open house. Councilmember Rainville.
I move that we approve the draft letter provided by Ms. Stockman with the, with the correction to the last sentence on the first page that the open house is held on January 8th of 2018 and not 17th.
Missed it by a year. Motion?
Second.
Motion in the second. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. No discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have presented a spreadsheet showing what neighboring communities are doing as far as hours and staffing and pay. Corey, with, with all that you've been going through, have you even had a chance to review any of this? As far as that or what a plan would be?
No, unfortunately, Lori was the one who basically headed up that. So, I'm not really sure exactly what you're looking for, besides you just wanted us to research warming house attendance and give you some information. I wasn't provided with detail of what I was supposed to do with that information.
Well, the intention, I guess, would be if we're going to staff a warming house, you know, looking at what our neighboring communities are doing for, you know, who they're hiring, what, how they're doing, what they're doing for training, what hours they're operating, so we could come up with a plan of our own. If we're going to staff something seven days a week, you know, what, what does that look like? Who do they report to? What, who do they contact on weekends? And what, what do we do in case of some type of emergency? What type of training would we expect a person staffing warming house to do? How would they get in touch with city staff when necessary and emergency staff when necessary? And then, what we would propose for hours to be, but looking at this, you're probably looking at three part-time people to cover a week. And my presumption was that somehow that this would come through the, the staff as far as a proposal as to how this would be handled, how we would hire them, how we would supervise them, who do they report to?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think before you were going to request staff to present something, I think you need to come up with a plan of how you're going to pay for this. I was never under the assumption that staff was going to be the one who's presenting a request for council action to the council, given the limited information that we were basing it off of.
And, and no, my, my assumption was, first of all, we're getting the information so we know what, what to compare it to. Then, what's the plan going forward? We had not gotten to that point yet. We've not requested staff to do that. We're just saying, what, what is being done around us, so we can say, that's similar to what we want. You know, let's target something like this. You know, if people are operating, you know, it seems like Ramsey's got the longest hours. Got to put some guidelines to that, but I think part of it is to see what neighboring communities were doing and what, what kind of guidelines we would like to see, to recommend to staff to prepare. Now, the fact that ICE is being made right now, people are going to want to see that warming house open.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
We haven't even discussed as, as a council, if we were actually going to staff it or not either, or, and just leave it, otherwise, just leave it open. You know, if you go, you know, to other communities, you know, most other communities, their warming houses are considerably bigger than that, so there's room, obviously, for somebody to sit and staff. That's not real big, you know, to have somebody sit in there X amount of hours a day. So, again, I think one of the things that we need to ask ourselves is, you know, is that something that we deem that we have to have?
Well, what's council think?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I, there's a, there's a fine line between having someone there in case something happens and, and just leaving it open. You know, there was still certainly should, if, if we're not going to staff it, there needs to be some guidelines around that as far as it's closed at 9:00, or, and then it comes into who's going to close it. I mean, that's part of, part of having that building there, even with the lights, otherwise, someone, if it's just left open, someone could come in at, if they really felt like it, come in at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning and turn on the lights and do whatever. Is that what we want? Having it staffed, you're, you're kind of regulating the hours that the warming house is open, but if it's just open until a set period of time, I guess that. is open, but if it's just open until a set period of time, I guess that theoretically would be a compromise, so to speak, but then it comes down to again, who's going to then lock it, unlock it and lock it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Why can't we handle it the same way we do the bathrooms at the city park during the summer and have, you know, an automatic lock on it after a certain time? And that way you're not staffing it. It is locked, you are basically dictating when it can be used and can't be used. And you're not, again, needing that person to sit there and pay for that person to sit there.
My concern would be like the automatic locks we have in the recycling center. Something to do is just pop something in there and when it goes to lock, it doesn't lock and you've got it open for whenever, so.
Well, and technically there's no reason why somebody couldn't do that now.
As far as?
The warming house or any other building for that matter.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Yeah, I think at this point there has, you know, last year was used or, and there was really no trouble, so I don't know if we have issues or I think people can self-police themselves at this point. The lights are supposed to be on a timer, I think, and you could do, like Paul had mentioned, is you could put the door on a timer as well, too. And if you wanted to, you could even put the heat on a timer. So if somebody isn't in there, the stuff shuts off automatically. And whatever the closing time is for each night, the doors would lock and the door shuts, so.
Well, I'm up there skating and the doors lock at eight and I'm not paying attention. It's eight, my stuff's inside. And the doors are locked, what do I do? Who do I call?
Guess you come back tomorrow and pick up your gear.
If your car keys aren't in.
But if we have a sign on there that says, you know, something along that line, that closes and locks it. Because again, you look, you look at other communities and their warming houses that are facilities that they have. Typically, you know, they're set up where they have restrooms inside, it's much bigger area, and they have other things inside. You know, you go up to Ramsey Central Park, they have benches to change, they have bathrooms, they have a gas fireplace to warm up, you know, so there's a lot more in there than that person or who the attendant would, you know, clean up and kind of monitor. Obviously, we don't have that same type of facility here.
Yeah, it's a little smaller than what they've got over at Central Park.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would think that if we are not going to staff it, and I don't know at this point in the game with this being December 12th, if we could get a policy in place, procedures, application, you know, job posting, applications, interviews, and all that before spring. So I think at, at this point in the game, I, I see it being unstaffed this year, but because it is unstaffed, I think that we need to have good signage that tells them the hours of the op, of, of operation and some guidelines for behavior in the building. And Councilmember Bettinger said we, you know, we didn't have any trouble last year and that's wonderful, but I think that...
We didn't, we didn't heat it last year, we didn't light it last year.
That is correct.
Without lights, it's pretty self-regulating.
If we're going to do the automatic timer, we need to get a quote on what that's going to cost, what the signage would say and what that would, what that would cost. And if, if that's to be our warming house, we accepted that as a donation if that's to be our warming house, unless we make some, a change to it, whether it be a second structure or an addition to it. We have basically limited ourself to what we can offer as an amenity of, of a warming house. I'm grateful for A and B to have donated that, but if given its size, we can't, there's not a lot you can do inside of it.
So there was talk about the lights being on a timer. Have we determined that?
That's what was in the end.
I mean, is the timer going to be inside the warming house?
Mm-hmm.
And that's just to turn the lights on for a given period of time and then they would turn off again?
Mm-hmm.
Is there another timer to control when the lights could even be on?
Well, and I think that's where you would, if you put a, a timer on the lock of the warming house itself, obviously, then you can control that.
Right. I'm just thinking.
What you were talking about, Paul, was there wouldn't be an activator inside. You could turn on the lights during a period of time and when the, when the doors are supposed to be shut, then the, you couldn't get in to turn on the lights.
Correct.
So they wouldn't automatically go on every night at a certain time.
Correct.
Only when somebody was there to skate.
Correct. And, and you know, and that's the point, is if, if there's nobody up there using the rink, why have the lights on?
Right. I was thinking if the rinks, if the warm, if the warming house is going to close at nine, turn off the lights at quarter to nine. So then they're less likely to get locked in.
So we're talking about a timer for the house itself and then the lights could be on when somebody uses it. The heat would, you're talking about being on a timer, so if somebody leaves it, they don't leave the heat running. So we need to know what the, what it costs to put the, the door on a timer and the heat on a timer. The lights are ought to be on a timer inside a locked building and the indoor lights would be on a timer on the inside of the locked building.
Or you could get just a, a switch, a timer where it turns the power on out there at a certain time and shuts it off at a certain time and the doors wouldn't have to be locked. They wouldn't have lights, they wouldn't have heat. If you close at times 10, all the power goes off at 10. You're still able to get in the building, get your stuff and leave, but the power goes off. But we'd have to get a price on that.
All right, so we need a price on that and then we'd have to determine what the hours would be. And the lights are in, you said?
They came in today, right, Cory?
So do we have any idea how long it's going to take them for them?
Last I talked to Dependable, they said that, well, it sounds like Cory said they picked them up today and then they were going to just try to squeeze it in whenever they could, depending, depending on weather.
All right, so we need some research on the cost of timers and a plan of action and hours. What's the recommendation here? Sounds like the lights won't be in for a little bit anyway.
Well, could be, probably as soon as next week, technically. Because as of right now, there's no skatable ice surface. Joe's been, you know, with the weather up and down, he's been working on getting it flooded now.
Well, a recommendation to get a quote on a timer for the power and recommendation for the hours of operation. And I would say if the building, if there's evidence the building is used for something other than warming yourself when you're skating, we'd have to revisit the whole thing. If there's any evidence of that, I, I would recommend we lock it immediately and come up with a plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I can obviously talk to Dependable and get quotes on being that they've done everything up there so far, find out what it costs for a door slash heat timer and then a master powered timer to shut off by a certain time. We would just have to then as a council come up with the recommended hours of operation.
All right. So we want to make a motion accordingly? And what would your presumption be that we would have this all and, and address it in our January meeting? And until then, the house operates like it did last year?
Yeah, I can, obviously, we'll have probably lights prior to that, so.
Is there a chance within his budget, his budgeted items, that we could at least put the lights on a timer while we're figuring this out?
The lights will be on a timer.
Yeah, but the doors aren't locked, he can go turn the timer on.
Correct. So the lights will be on a timer based on his original quote proposal. And when I talk to him, I will ask if, you know, based on his original quote and what we have in the bud, what we budgeted for, if there's any room in there to do any of this other stuff.
Yeah, the, obviously, the, the master power would be the important one because that minimizes opportunity if the power's all off. Wouldn't want somebody going in there and cranking up the heat and leaving that heater. Electric heat. Is that right? Is that electric heat?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a question, is because that's on a separate circuit, for lack of a better word, are we, Cory, do you know, too, are we receiving a separate billing for that?
I would assume we do, just like we, that lights right at the end there.
That right there, okay.
We do get a separate bill.
All right, thank you.
All right, what do we have for motion? Councilmember Bryan.
Are we just taking care of getting the quotes now to revisit in January or we also need to solve the, if we were to have or to get everything in place, to get the electronics done in January and just get the quotes now?
My assumption would be quotes now because we can't get things done until we've decided on whether reasonable quotes.
Okay.
I think it would be reasonable, like the city park, to put post hours. So if somebody were to come up there, say a patrol car was driving by and we had posted hours and somebody's in the building outside the posted hours, they could at least, you know, get them out of the building.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to set hours, weekdays from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. and weekends from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Do we want to set, say for an example, Christmas break, do we want to set a 4:00 p.m.? You're saying 4:00 a.m. or 4:00 p.m.? Because go to Christmas break, you know, are we saying people can't skate?
Well...
You would need the lights.
We would treat, treat that as a weekend, a days off, I would imagine.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And during Christmas break, it's going to be light out during the day.
Yeah.
So until 4:00.
But you'd want the warming house.
You'd want the warming house to still be locked, yeah.
I was out there last year, I mean, there were parents with their little children there in the mornings, you know, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I mean, you could have every day 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I mean, during the week when the kids are in school, nobody's going to be out there anyway, but...
Yeah. Unless there's homeschoolers who want recess. All right. Mr. Mayor, 11 to 10, it seems, every day it seems reasonable.
All right, so then there would be a, an emotion that would be posted accordingly?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can you repeat the, the times and the days?
Seven days a week, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, seven days a week, okay.
Councilmember Rick.
If we have enough money left from the $7,500 we already allocated, do we want Dependable to put in a master powered timer to shut off at 10:00 p.m.?
I believe that would be a good idea.
With the fund rate.
The other thing we want to visit in the future, like we rent out parks, you know, the parks close at a certain time, but let's say I do want to come up there some night, I, I don't know, who might want to use it after 10:00 p.m., but, you know, we, we at a previous meeting talked about what other cities do for rentals. If there were time to actually rent the, the surface privately like we do a park, we'd have to engage, we have to develop a policy for that, too. For right now, it's just open to the public during these times. All right, did we get a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Other discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'd like to clarify something. So, Councilmember Rickard, so you're asking that if, within the initial $7,500 that we approved for the installation of the pools and the power to the pools and the lights, the, so if we have money remaining in that $7,500 that we would just go ahead? Okay. So my question then is, are we tracking? Do we know where we are at, at this point in that $7,500? I mean, we know what Dependable's bid was, we know what the Conexus bid was, but yet they had, we, we received an invoice from them prior to the power even going in, which is a requirement of theirs. I saw in the claims for this month, items for the rinks, and so do we know where we are in that $7,500 so that we are comfortable in saying that, yes, go ahead and do that rather than do it and possibly go over budget?
No, and, and what I'm saying is if, yeah, we'd have to find out, I'd have to talk to Dependable because I'm not sure where he's at yet. So, but again, if, if we wouldn't go over that allotted amount, then, no, we'd have to either wait or, I was saying, if it is based on his...
Right.
...work that he needs remaining to do, if he could do it within that.
And, and I understand that, I just want to make sure that we know where we are in that $7,500.
Because based on that original Conexus, Dependable, and everything else, we did have a little wiggle room in the total amount.
Yes, we did.
Cory, do we know yet if we got winter rates or not?
No, we...
We haven't gotten...
We have winter, yeah. We were getting charged for winter rates.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Cory, do we know if there was an additional charge over the $1,300 that was the minimum billing?
No, there wasn't any additional charge.
Okay, well, that's helpful.
All right, other discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'm wondering if Councilmember Bettinger would be willing to amend his motion to include the installation or to the authorization to have Councilmember Rickard talk to Dependable and to install the master timer as long as it's not exceeding the $7,500.
Sure.
Total.
Total.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Do we also want to include signage, stating the hours? Is that part of it? I've missed, I know we talked about the hours. Is there anything other than the hours? Is there anything else that we want on that sign? As in skate at your own risk, no smoking? I, I don't know what, if it's going to be unstaffed, we need to give some guidance, I believe, but...
And what would your recommendation be?
Well, the, the hours, that there you are skating at your own risk, it's unattended, that there's no smoking in the building, and...
Actually, no tobacco in the building?
No tobacco used in the building. I mean, I don't know if we want to say something about, you know, please clean up after yourself. I don't know, I mean, do we have a garbage, is there a garbage can in that? I don't know.
There wasn't.
We should have some type of a receptacle in there for people to put garbage.
Wanting to include that, Councilmember Bettinger?
Who's going to make the sign, or do staff, get a clerk to have signs made, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raynville.
I would like to go back, was it, Noka County is doing our land use ones, right? They were, seemed to be the best, the most reasonably priced, lowest bid, if we could ask them to do that.
How long does it take, Noka County?
Depends on how busy they are, like our land use signs are done. It shouldn't take, you know, 30 days, 30, 60 days. Something like this, if it's smaller signs, it might be quicker.
So if we were to do that, I would have, I would then ask that we move to have staff put up something temporarily that includes that information, and then have Noka give us a permanent sign.
And are we, Mr. Mayor? The sign itself, then, does it get attached to the building? I know they did do a skate at your own risk last year on the boards. So where, where, where do we place the signs so that they are visible and people see the hours, they know that, you know? Do we tell them that there's automatic door locks? If we find we can get that included, do we add that on so people understand at 9:00 o'clock or at 10:00 o'clock, the door's going to lock, you better get off the ice? I mean, I know, as a kid, I skated all the time, and many times we skated way past the attendant, you know, they left, and we had to change into skate, out of skates and the boots outside. And they gave us the warning to say, closing in 10, they'd put the lights closing in 10, so we knew to go in and get our stuff out. But it's very easy to get distracted while you're out there, as in any sport or anything, easy to get distracted and lose track of time. And I hate to see it, that somebody get their stuff locked in there unless you have a parent with keys or your cell phones in there, I don't, that should be part of the verbiage.
I think until we get the door locks, right now, we just have to have some. And I, I think it should be posted outside, laminated, posted outside and posted inside. You know, we get the permanent, people know the lights are, you know, going off, power's going out. Question is, with the electric heat, if somebody goes in at 11:00 and turns on the heat in the morning, it's going to be on until 10:00 at night. Might make sense to put that on a short timer, so it has to be renewed. So if you could check on that, too, Paul. All right, so we've got a, we've got a motion, I may have to repeat it for Cory's sake. It's going to include temporary signage, long-term signage from the county. So we've got the hours of operation, the hours, the, the building will be open and the power supplied, actually, the building will be open, power will be supplied. Skate at your own risk, indemnify the city. Anything else?
And no smoking.
The-
No tobacco.
No tobacco.
Installing the power switch.
The authorization, if we're within budget, to install the master power switch on a timer. And timer of some sort on the heater, must be renewed. Anything else?
Garbage, receptacle inside.
Would we rather have like a 55 gallon drum sitting outside, so it's not, so it's big enough for us, you know? Because if you put something too big in there, again, that's not very big inside.
Are, are you able to, I suppose you can find a bag that fits a 55 gallon drum?
Yeah. It's the outside tether. Don't want it to blow away.
Yeah.
I, I think that we should do one with a cover on it, though, the type that you have to push the, like we have in the, maybe we could take one of them from the pavilion. But something so that can doesn't fill up with snow. Maybe take one of them from the pavilion and. As a matter of fact, you could probably put one of those from the pavilion inside and one outside. We've got a number of those that are heavy duty and weighted for outside.
Yeah, the round ones are not all that big.
Oh, we got the rectangle over there for the pavilion, and they're heavy. So let's say two ways receptacles from the pavilion, one inside, one outside. Authorization would fall to pursue what can be done within budget. Dependable, anything else? Going once, going twice. Seeing and hearing nothing else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Make a motion to create a turnout gear fund and the transferring of the $7,500 allocated for turnout gear into that fund. And then approve transferring the remaining approximately $14,219 from the fire department's budget into the general fire fund. As well as approving, giving Fire Chief Kona authorization to purchase a newer used rescue truck for the Northern Fire Station in the price range of $65,000 to $80,000, including transportation costs. And his, with his authorization, the fire chief will work with the city clerk and or mayor on the transportation.
I'll second that.
I think we, the way we'd say that before, he is, actually, when he's looking at the equipment, he's also contacting us. So I would like to make that part of this, not just the airfare and transportation, but actually when he gets a prospect on a truck to, to include the clerk and the mayor. And we've had Joe look at the trucks he's brought in so far, so I like the idea that Joe's looking at them. So we want to amend that to authorization, we'll work with the city clerk and mayor-
On the-
-on the, before a decision is made and on transportation.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before he amends his motion, I wanted to bring up one thing, is with this new creation of this turnout gear fund? You guys had approved several years ago to put money from the fire equipment fund into the, or from the fire fund into the fire equipment fund for turnout gear purposes? I didn't include that in there because I didn't want to confuse the situation. Did you want to also transfer, pull that money from the fire equipment fund and put it in the turnout gear fund in conjunction to this $7,500?
Do you know how much that is?
It's $7,500.
We've just been holding $7,500? Yes.
Okay.
Because we're going to need that in 2019.
Okay. So we'll transfer that from that fund essentially, and then transfer the year-end fund to the-
So we'll, we'll cede the turnout gear fund with $15,000. Yes.
$75 from the existing equipment fund, as well as another $7,500 from the current existing budget.
So, poor Chief Kona's going to find out he didn't get his full $14,000 anyways. But I, I think the intention of that was to keep it for turnout gear, so.
And I've already talked to him about it, so he knew. I just didn't want to muddy up and try to explain that.
So council's, council's okay with both those being put into the turnout gear fund? So you'll have a specific fund for that. So you'll amend the RCA or the motion to include contacting us when a prospective truck is- Like I said, Joe's been pretty available to look at when they bring them in, but very helpful, by the way, to do that. All right, any other comments on the? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tennis Lustico requests to waive fire call. Motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to deny the waiving of the fire call bill for Mr. Lustico.
We have a motion.
Second?
We have a second discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
It was clear, determined from the chief, that the, the fire was a, a running fire, not a brush pile. We have since amended our policy regarding burning permits to include more detailed information. I would also, so that that gets handed out when burning permits are issued going forward.
My understanding is in response to Mr. Lustico's concern here about not fully understanding the difference between a running fire and burning piles, or how many burning piles you could have, he did say at the, at the workshop that his big concern is less defined and more the communication. And my understanding is Cory has amended our procedure in handing out burning permits to include that additional document that we saw at the workshop, which was one of the stated purposes Mr. Lustico had in bringing it to our attention. The people need to know the full details. And if he was trying, if he were intending to do a running fire, he'd have to work with the fire department, probably the DNR, to include something like that. Now, in a case like this, he could have broken his piles into 15 foot piles and burned three of them at a time. If he's going to do something like that, and it looks like a house on fire in the distance, I would still say go above and beyond your permit. So that's going to be the type of thing, but when Cory's issuing a permit, he typically isn't going to say, here's, here's the regulations, it's, you can't be any bigger than 15 feet and you can't have any more than three at a time. Common sense says you don't want to do anything that causes your, your fire department to be called out. Typically, when, if I'm burning a big brush pile, I call all my neighbors first to, to alert them, because they're the most likely ones to be calling on. And then you expect that if you've properly completed your burning permit, you've told them where it is, and if somebody calls in, the fire department has that information and says, that's permitted, we can send the duty officer out there to make sure it's really in control. Duty officer coming out's not going to cause a problem unless you're out of control. So I think that there's a certain, it's incumbent on anybody having a burning permit to abide by it. Our job is to communicate more effectively what the rules are. And Mr. Lustico came to, to us to request that, and I think we've made those changes accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, just clarify with the staff is, we have never, when we've issued a permit, even though the one regulation says three piles, it does say that they have to be adequately staffed. We always tell people that if you're going to burn, if you have more than one pile, you have to burn one at a time, because somebody has to be in attendance by all times, and it's all a concern. And so I don't believe that anything was told Mr. Lustico any different than that, so.
Well, and, and as he explained, he had five piles going, he called piles, but they were, you know, 100 yards long. So they weren't piles per se, they were ropes. And as the chief said, it technically was a running fire. And we don't allow that, even though it's on the permit, we, we don't allow that. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
I, he did get a permit, though, I don't think he, he thought he was doing anything wrong. I don't know, he claimed he didn't have five piles burning, but I guess, depending upon what you want to listen to, but, and I didn't, I didn't hear from either side saying that the fire was out of control, but the staff went out there and, and put it out, so I think he was out there attending these fires and taking care of them, and he thought he was legal and had a permit and. Even if they would have went out there and it wasn't, would have been a legal fire, if there would have been just three piles, unless they're 15 feet, the fire department still would have showed up, and it would have been a bill for us, so, you know, I think we could work with him a little bit, I mean, I don't think he intentionally was trying to go out there and, and start an illegal fire, I think he really thought he was, had a legal fire out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raynville.
Well, the Councilmember Bettinger, of the total fine, what would you suggest as far as working with him on?
We, we talked about having some discussion on this, that we had that house fire down in Rogers Lake area that we told him just to hold off and pay in their bill, too, so we never did have that discussion whether we're going to continue billing all these backdoor residents, or are we just going to take it out of our fire budget? We budgeted for them fire calls already, I guess, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rickert.
To jump on what Councilman Bettinger's saying, I do believe that, you know, there's certain calls that should be charged for and certain ones that we just don't charge for, it's part of the standard fire department budget. Obviously, you know, this one kind of falls in a gray area, but obvi- if it's a, you know, illegal burn, you know, it's, it's obvious. If it's illegal business and there's a structure fire, that's obvious. But again, if this, if it's a structure fire, a house fire, barn fire, that's covered by the city. If it's a medical call, it's covered by the city. At least, that's how I believe. This one, again, like I said, it, it falls under the gray area, he had a permit, we didn't do a real great job of defining exactly what our expectations of that permit are, you know, and that's our, kind of our fault. We, we have gone above and beyond and, and now we do that. But I think, you know, I think there is some room to work. But again, moving forward, I would like us to come up with some policy on what actually we define as, you know, homeowner residence responsibility, if there is any type of call that the fire department responds to, and what the city actually covers under our standard levy that we have for the operating budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
So with that said, and with that said, I'd, I'd be willing, being, there's some confusion on information that was, was not given to, and will be given to future burning permits, I'd be willing to meet them halfway and, and forgive half of it.
All right, my understanding is we've got staff of 986 and truck of 700. Is that right? 1686. Does that cut that in half? Go right in half, 843. I'm seeing a lot of nodding of heads, and we. Councilmember Bryan, you have the motion on the floor.
I will amend my motion to change the fine amount to $843.
I have a second, then.
And reiterate that we have changed our procedure so that people are given more clear communication when they receive a burning permit, and their obligations and responsibilities. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? On this, on the same topic, the, the new form, one of the things I see lacking in numerous forms that we as a city have, is there's no date on this as to when it was, we don't adopt forms, but when it was put into service and/or when it was revised. And I would like to make a motion that going forward-
Starting with this?
Starting with this, any form, whether it be instituted as new or revised as from an existing, that the dates of that- an existing, that the dates of that, that they are dated. And that would be whether internal staff does it or our consultant staff does it.
You say dated and maybe rev level? And this is a rev zero.
Well, technically, your date is your rev level.
Would be, but it doesn't tell you that there's something before it.
Or it, yeah.
Rev zero, at least, this is the first time this has been...
Which I don't...
But we do have different forms out there, and you don't know what is the newest form. You know, we have, there are, I have found the same form, but different versions of it, and we don't know what is current. So, that's why I would make that motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
A second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if, I was gonna talk to Cory about it later, if we were going to, since we're going to be revising that, if we can add the, just a line about that to the chief's comment that running fires are not allowed.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I think, though, there's kind of a gray area there too, because I think if the individual would work with the DNR and whatnot, running fires could be allowed.
An issued city permit cannot have a running fire.
The regular city-issued permit does not allow, but it is possible.
'Cause it's on the form, that's the only...
So, maybe you say running fires require DNR permit.
Sure.
In addition to this permit. That make sense? Because they are allowed, but they have to be supervised or approved by the DNR. Typically, if they're gonna approve them, they staff them.
Should be approved by the DNR and local fire department, just so that we're aware of it.
Yep. All right, so we'd add that verbiage? As part of the date and the rev, in this particular one, I'll add the verbiage for running fires must be approved, pre-approved by the DNR and a local fire department. I have a question. We have a sign out front of the office's fire warden. Do you guys actually have training to be fire wardens, or is that just come with it?
Well, it's funny that you mention that, because when I first started here, I actually got a fire warden card, and all I had to do was send my paperwork into it. But when Lori was working here, she sent in twice to the DNR paperwork, and they never once responded to. So, I don't know, but we, there's, even every five years, we go to a dinner, and we get wards and everything.
Preparing to most fire permits?
Yeah. I don't know, but...
So, as we restaff, then we technically have to have a card from the...
Well, we register them and let them know that this is a new staff, and they're gonna be issuing burning permits with the city, but they never responded to Lori's, so I don't...
Go back and review all the permits she signed and say they're illegal?
Yeah.
All right. Item D.
Did we vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I had two things in regards to the fire issue. The second is, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Rickard, you have now a couple times talked about the issue of having, looking at how we charge for fire calls, and I'm wondering then if we can look to you to bring forth a policy, at least in the draft stage, that council could look at and have discussion and make changes where we see the need to do that. Because otherwise, we just keep talking about it.
So noted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the change for gambling at bootleggers to the Elk River youth hockey.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item DD. Purchase agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would move that we counter the offer, but from Mr. Curtis, that we request the full tax value, which is undervalued, seventy-eight thousand dollars, and then split the closing cost.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second, any other discussion?
The tax value is seventy-eight four, or seventy...
Is it seventy-eight four? I had seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight four is what Cory's...
Is it seventy-eight four? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E. Employee review, are you still sitting on one? So, one of the five of us has it in. We need to get our completed forms in to Cory, or if you choose not to, please say, "I respectfully am not gonna be doing this," so she knows and she can close that part of it. And then, we'll need to determine a time to review those, once Cory's had time to compile the information and share it with Joe, when he sets a date.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment of this. I have to say that I'm disappointed with the fact that you were given a whole month, yet when you ask us for things like this, you expect it to be done immediately following month. If you were to base our reviews on whether or not we're to get a raise or not, and we're gonna just keep pushing it from month after month after month, and now we're gonna be going in to grant her, so you might as well forget it then, because it doesn't do us any good if you're just gonna hold back on that. And I also propose that I would like my reviews public, and I would like them recorded. I don't know what your plan is as far as getting the reviews together. You expected us to have Lori's and Eric's done in a timely manner. Those were already supplied, but you choose not to do my endos.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I will say on my part, I, probably three days after we got that directive, I had major surgery. I'm still out of work, and I've not had the opportunity or the strength to do it. It is on my calendar to do, and I do plan to do it, but I, my health was, came first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
I think moving forward, I don't really see why we need to tie any monetary cost-of-living increase to the, to staff, to this employee review. I think we should come up with a policy and set a specific time or date that, you know, we look at that cost-of-living increase, and whether we give it or we don't. Otherwise, as Cory said, this thing gets dragged out forever. You know, and honestly, you know, I'll say, you know, I'm one of those yet who has turned in anything in, and I'm struggling with it in an aspect where we're looking at what their job responsibilities, job functions are. In all honesty, I'm not sure what she does on a daily basis. I know she gets things done. I know we don't get complaints. I know the city operates fine, and we're well within budget. So, it's hard for me to sit here and give her a one through five on day-to-day job functions when I'm not sure if she's performing them or not. I'm assuming she will be, because we don't get complaints and everything's getting done. So, how can I judge her when I really don't know? And then to actually then use that as some type of tool for any type of pay increase, regardless if it's cost-of-living or performance, I don't think that's right. So, again, in my opinion, regardless if we do it of just a cost-of-living increase or, and keep a performance review or pay increase separate, we need, in my opinion, to set a specific date that we either award or do not award a cost-of-living increase for a staff. And then, that set date, it either happens or doesn't on that date, and then if the forms aren't filled out, it does not impact that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
As I mentioned at the workshop, it was a misunderstanding of the policy. I was expecting that a date was to be set, and then the reviews would be turned in ahead of that date, so they're, mine are almost done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I, you know, we can keep on reviewing, but I think our employees deserve a raise. They've had one raise in the last ten years, and I think that's kind of a shame on us. They deserve more than that. And I think that's part of the reason why we've lost a couple of our staff, is because we don't take care of our employees. So, I'd like to make a motion to grant our three full-time staff a three percent cost-of-living raise.
I'll second that. Motion is second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
As this is the first that this issue is being brought forward, I suggest that the issue be brought forward with an RCA for a future council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would agree with Councilmember Bryan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
We have approved other items tonight without an RCA.
We've also been talking about this, and nothing's, and no one's ever taken the time or prioritized it to move it forward to with an RCA.
So, we're gonna delay it another month.
But how did we approve these other items that we talked about without an RCA, but now you're required, we have to add RCA for this particular one?
Well, they're all, the part about forms and policy, though, that was all part of the, that was all part of the council item.
I see no RCA for any of the stuff we talked about for the hockey rink. We approved all kinds of different things on that, probably two, three motions, but now this one needs an RCA?
There was a previous RCA to generate that information.
No, there wasn't. There was no RCA ever on operation, hours of operation.
And that would be part of the discussion of...
We just approved it tonight!
Of the hockey rink.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Based on Councilmember Rickard's comments, then I think we should go back and withdraw every motion that we made tonight that wasn't previously provided, including the document, the dates on the, on forms, and wait until those things come to us.
I'm not the one who's saying that there needs to be an RCA for everything that we do, because I don't believe it should. We should be able to discuss different items that come up in a meeting and be able to make motions and be able to make approvals. There's no reason we cannot do that, and we did that effectively, in my opinion, tonight. So, if there's a motion presented in front of us because of an item that's on the agenda that goes in line with that, there's no reason, in my opinion, why we can't make a motion on something in regards to that item on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
In the items we talked about today, we had already had a set dollar amount of seventy-five-hundred dollars, so we're not expending any additional monies for that. The other one was my request for dating forms. I will be happy to pull that and put that in RCA. There's no cost associated with that. I'm not sure what else we moved that had any financial impact that was on this agenda. This has a financial impact to us that we don't know what it is. And I think it behooves us to have that dollar amount in front of us, so that we know what it is we're voting on. And we don't have that information. We know in the items with the skating rink, that was not to exceed seventy-five-hundred dollars, and that's why I asked. Do we know where we are within that seventy-five-hundred-dollar approval to, will any of this fall within that? And if it doesn't, then we need to have RCAs stating we're gonna spend additional monies.
I think the other unfortunate thing is, well, it puts us in a real awkward position, because it's a good notion, and it's something Councilman Bettinger, you've said a number of times, I think people deserve a raise, because there's cost of living. You've mentioned a number of times the lack of raises over the last period of years, and that you think it's important. But I do think if, to bring that to council and say, "I think it," as opposed to, "I've thought this through, I've calculated the cost, I've, you know, presented it as a, as part of our budget, and I'd like the action on it now with facts before you," as opposed to, very emotional, because obviously, you've got Cory sitting here, and it affects her directly. And to say, "We would like some fiscal responsibility and some data to discuss," makes it sound like, you know, we're spitting on Cory and Joe and Eric. And that's not the intention, but the style with which it's done, saying, "I don't have any details, I don't know what it costs, but I just want a flat three percent, and it is what it is, and I have it budgeted for it accordingly." That, to me, is different than saying, "We brought up research as far as what other communities are doing, as far as hours and staffing, without expending any more money, can we do something so we can utilize the warming house that's sitting there? You know, ice is being made, can we do something to do with the warming house there? We know what the costs and consequences are gonna be. I don't know that it'd be tremendous cost to, on any new documents, put a date on them and some rev level saying, 'This is the original or it's not the original.'" So, I do think there's some slight difference there, and that we, I've tried to make sure that we didn't bog down so much that simple things like that couldn't be done easily within a council meeting. But I do think it is more significant. Unfortunately, I don't know what that is, three percent across the board. I don't know what those dollar amounts are, and I think it is appropriate in making that request to have some research and some data to present, "Here's what it would cost us, and it's well within the budget, we've just approved."
We just approved signs for an ice rink. We have no, we have no cost for them. We have no dollar amount. We don't even know what they're gonna look like. And you know what? It's been, what have you done for the city employees here? I mean, the reviews never get done on time. This ain't the first year. It goes on and on and on. You sit up here, you try to take benefits away from them, you don't wanna give them a raise, you give, they've gotten three percent in the last ten years. Three, that's a point three percent per year. That is terrible, and you wonder why we're losing employees.
I don't think you wanna go there right now. I don't think you wanna necessarily go there right now. You feel strongly about it. You're passionate about it. Put it in writing. Put it in writing, what are the costs? You know, I'm sorry that nobody has thought about this ice rink far enough ahead to say, "How reasonably can we use this?" You're gonna open a building to the general public in the dark and say, "No regulations, just do what you want." We don't do that in our other parks in the summertime when it's lighter. We don't do that in other situations. So, yes, we don't know what the signs cost, so we can get a quote. We do know that we can put up staff-made signs right now, and I'm certainly willing to wait until we get a quote from the county and say, "What would it cost us to put up two signs, or to have two signs made, be put up for an ice rink?" We certainly got by for years in the recycling center with homemade signs, and I don't think that's an unreasonable cost to put something up, so that we can use that response... And I don't think that's an unreasonable cost to put something up, so that we can use that responsibly. To open up a building where you're asking youth and mixed ages to be involved and have no regulations on it without signage, I thought it was a reasonable thing to do.
You missed the point, though. You were saying that Paul made the point. You approved expenditures with all RCA. That's the point. I don't care if it's a buck or 10 bucks, or what it is.
Well, I do.
That's the point.
But again, you're living by one set of rules and you expect others to live by another set.
Exactly, exactly.
That's the problem.
What, what, what set of rules am I living by?
Exactly. We said we couldn't, Dan made the moment, made the comment that we cannot do anything right now, tonight. We shouldn't be able to vote on this, because we do not have an RCA. But yet, we can approve anything else.
I'm not saying, I'm saying, we don't have the information. And RCA happens to be an avenue of doing that. I'm not opposing it because it's not an RCA. I'm opposing it because we have no information, other than an emotional appeal, without a consequence to cost.
There was talk about this during budget time. The money's there. There was, this was brought up and discussed during when we were putting together our budget. So it isn't the first time it was talked about, but, you know, I thought it would have been nice if the reviews were supposed to have been done back in November. If everything would have fallen into place like it's supposed to, then today we could be talking about the money, but the stuff just don't get done.
Well, to make a statement that was discussed during budgets, what adjustments did we make during the budget cycle?
That question was asked if there was enough money in the budget.
What?
The existing budget to give our employees like a 3% raise without raising a levy, and the answer was yes. That was just, that was brought up during the budget meetings, workshops.
That answer was yes.
Yes.
I guess I, I have to go back. I don't recall it, so...
I asked a question, so I recall it very well.
And who said yes?
That Cory was put to Cory, the clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
So we didn't, we didn't make any adjustments in there, but Councilmember Ringo.
But in the question, Councilmember Bettinger again has raised that question numerous times. But again, during our budget talks, when we talked about moving from here to there, monies increasing, decreasing, we all came to a decision that that was the route we were going to take. When the, when you had mentioned raises for the employees, and I don't remember if it was you or Ms. Leduser that said there was monies built in there, we as a council never said, "Okay, let's do 3%." Like we did, let's do, let's move the money here. Let's do this with roads and bridge. Let's do this with park and rec funds. We never agreed to that. And, you know, I, it's too bad that we didn't, but we didn't, and we've set a budget. And I don't know at this point in time whether or not there is enough to give our employees a 3% raise and then look at possibly merit raises per Councilmember Rickert. I don't know where that is. And to be honest, if there is enough to give them that and a merit raise, then we're budgeting too much in salary. Because if we can just raise and raise without having to change the dollars that we put into that fund, we've been overfunding that budget, and our taxpayers have been paying for that overfunding of that budget. And back to the, to the park, we had a, we had an RCA that said up to $7,500. If those signs don't come in, in, within that $7,500, we don't get, we don't get any of the other stuff.
The signs were not anywhere part of that $7,500.
Okay, then, then, then that's not, okay, then that needs to be clarified.
The signs were no part of the $7,500.
Okay, then that needs to be clarified, that the sign doesn't, the temporary signs were part of that, and then we're going to have
No, they were not.
Staff get, well, then they shouldn't be in there then. They shouldn't be, so I'm glad you caught that. Yeah, that was the electrical stuff, if it could be part of the $7,500. But again, it's kind of like Councilmember Rickert's comments about we need to do something with how we bill our fire calls. We can talk about it till we're blue in the face, but until somebody brings something forward to us that we can look at and we understand what is there, we need to have that in order to make a decision. And at this point, just saying we should give them a 3% COLA raise, to me, is not good government, and it's not a wise expenditure of tax dollars. We don't know, I don't even know what the COLA was this year. I don't...